My duty to announce that we had an executive session at 6:30 this evening, and we reconvene the reorganization meeting at STEM. Mr. Prost, please.
Mrs. Cozer, here. Mr. Lucassio?
Here.
Mr. May, here. Mr. McCannan? Mr. Meehan?
Here.
Mr. Abarto? Drop it. Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. George? Mr. Hauser?
Here.
Next is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to speak about any item on our agenda tonight. It will also be time at the end of the meeting to discuss any concerns. This bundle of hearing of visitors parlay.
I'd like to just point out, we do keep a fairly strict five-minute limit, so I don't want to cut people off. And try to keep those in time, if you please.
Anyone who wishes to speak?
Melissa Muller, 1866 Bethel Church Road in Latrobe. I'm a driver for A.J. Myers. So the new school was $3 million over budget, and Great Latrobe had to pay rent in the old school while the new one was still being built. So we are to believe that you're worried about the rock bottom price.
Excuse me one minute.
Yes.
Roll back from the beginning a bit, slower.
Sorry.
It's okay, take your time.
So, and plus the toilet. So, the new school that was $3 million over budget, and Great Latrobe had to pay rent in the old school while the new one was still being built. So, we are to believe that you're worried about the rock bottom price. Low-budget items are just that, they have never had a quality item. Looking through the numbers, yes, DMJ is lower and even gives you a discount your first year. But when you do the math, they raise the price up quickly and constant to an 11 percent. Where AJ raises an 8.82 percent in five years, that is a lower and slower increase. At the 2.75 yearly increase, DMJ will be higher than AJ in the next contract. And as you stated, only 6 percent is transportation cost. So that's not really a lot when you think of what you get for your 6 percent. Some of the things you get for the 6 percent, buses, drivers, repairs, upkeep, new buses, monitors, vans, overhead, taxes, fees in the district, fuel, gas. Yet AJ has stepped up and made your 6 percent worth of 100 percent for you and hoping for a long-term relationship with Great Latrobe. We are concerned that DMJ may not be able to cover this contract for many reasons, to name a few. DMJ can't fill the value run, we're splitting that with them. At Claireview, DMJ couldn't fill a run for one month to which we covered. Also, for Claireview, we take the wheelchairs on charters because DMJ doesn't have wheelchairs. Just recently, we got a call to transport two students to meet the DMJ van for transport to a sports charter because they couldn't do it. When DMJ was given the van contract, the new schools were entered, DMJ does not have wheelchairs, and they do not drive to Pittsburgh or from Roseville. And on Monday, she stated that there are 17 school districts. Or is that just in 17 schools? I also believe that only two of the districts have buses in them. So she has 200 employees. We employ 70-plus drivers and monitors to cover this district, and there are days with trips when that's not enough. While we will have quite a few drivers who do not want to drive for another company or renew a license for another company, where are all the drivers coming from? Do you understand the reality of a nationwide shortage of bus drivers? Do you take that chance? These are all questions I sincerely hope you take to heart when voting. We were being told by DMJ drivers at the beginning of the year that they weren't getting Latrobe's contract. There were comments made by their drivers such as, "No worries, if we want Latrobe, Latrobe is ours." Even your own administration was telling us that it doesn't matter whose name is on the bus. This was going on before any bids were submitted. But here we are fighting for our company and the job that we choose to do through them. Listen to the parents, listen to the students, the drivers. We take pride in the care of our equipment, and we pride ourselves in being able to transport the students with the A.J. Myers name. It really is about whose name is on at the side of the bus. I just want to close on a little bit of a personal note. Tom Ollier was my stepdad. He absolutely loved working for A.J. Myers. When we lost Tom, this company, the Myers Brothers, Melanie, Craig, Walt, all of these drivers stepped up and had my family's back through everything. These guys are my extended family. These are the kind of people that you will be losing if you go with DMJ. If you knew Tom, and I'm sure many of you did, then you know what kind of people you'll be.
I would just like to respond that we never paid rent to stay in Latrobe Elementary School, nor were we $3 million over budget. Thank you.
Dr. Tepfer, could I add one thing too?
Absolutely.
I think there was a statement that said at the end of this contract, we'd be paying more with DMJ. That's absolutely not the case at all. I didn't even share the numbers with A.J. Myers, they couldn't view them. At the end of the contract, we'll be paying DMJ around $2.8 million, and we'd be paying A.J. Myers almost $3.5 million. So the DMJ contract will be less after the five-month period, and it will have stayed the school district over $1 million over that five-month period. And those are facts, that's based on the numbers.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Will we please grab some of your air, some air you'd like?
I don't need a microphone.
I don't either.
Your name and address please.
Good evening. My name is James Myers, Vice President of A.J. Myers &amp; Sons. I just got a couple of topics to touch on here. When they put this out for an RFP, which is a request for price, it doesn't mean that they have to take the lowest price. In our business, we are a service industry. Now, are you guys willing to sacrifice service for a lower price? Isn't ironic that the two highest bids in the district were pretty much the same price, and DMJ came in at a lower price? And in the same token, the school districts they run for are Greensburg and Mount Pleasant. They run for $286 at Greensburg, $290 at Mount Pleasant, which is the exact same price that we submitted our bid to. They turned in a bid of $265, this is just $72,000 plus, which is the predominant loss in the industry. So they went $21 lower in Greensburg, $25 lower than Mount Pleasant at their daily rates. So if they can run for $265 here, why couldn't they run the same price at Greensburg and Mount Pleasant? Simply, it's not feasible. And another note is that when they did Greensburg contract, they bid it in a lower price and they got it. They heard through the red line that they wrote that to the district and requested more money because they bid it in too low and they couldn't make ends meet. I don't know that for a fact, but it's just a rumor. In our industry, we are pretty much fixed-cost industry. The price of buses that we buy and they buy are the same. Fuel's pretty much the same. Insurance is the same. Tires and parts, utilities, payroll taxes, workers' comp, these are all fixed costs. There's not any wiggle room that all I know. The only use costs that you can really cut are drivers' wages and maintenance on the buses. You want to take a chance on the student's safety because a company may or may not be able to afford new brakes or new tires on the bus because it's not in their budget. And the drivers, we've got four drivers, these are excellent people, they're dedicated, they get up, they owe our hundred in the morning, they drive in all-inkl. weather, road conditions, and we like to pay them as well as we can. And when you take a cut like that, that's one of the things that they're going to be cutting is drivers' wages. And on top of that, there's such a driver shortage in our country, I've never seen it this bad in my life. And we've been in business for 70 years. Another thing, our facility, we have a five-acre parking lot with a 10,000-square-foot repair shop, and a separate office, and an employee lounge for all our personnel. If we'd like any board member to come to tour our facilities and see what it takes to run a bus with 50-plus vehicles, you cannot run that many vehicles and staff that many employees in a parking lot. I'm sorry, it just can't be done with this scope. Like I said, we've been in business for almost 70 years. We know what the price is to operate a fleet of this size. It just does not add up what they turned in for their bid. We have been crunching the numbers for weeks, and we just can't make any sense of what they turned in for a bid. And I'm not sure what kind of calculator they used, but I'd like to have one of those. And that's all I have to say, and we appreciate the time we have here. We have a good working relationship with the district. I thought we'd done a good job. I asked more here, I don't know if you had any trouble with our service or anything done. We always try to be a reputable company, and we would like to continue to operate this district if all possible. And we'd be willing to negotiate and work as much as we can to satisfy you guys. I appreciate it.
Anyone else who wishes to speak?
My name is Bob Murray, I'd like to get on a couple of points here. You know, 50 brand-new buses, that's pretty enticing. But let me remind you that when A.J. Myers got the contract six years ago, they purchased 30-some new buses. About three years ago, they purchased another 10 or 12 brand-new buses. And this year, they purchased another six brand-new buses. Being that said, I'd like to... My second point is, when my bus, something breaks on it, the shop, they get it in as quick as they can, and me and we have two of the best mechanics in the district. They have my bus back out on the road the same day or at least by the next morning. And that shows me that A.J. Myers, they went, their bus is in tiptop shape all the time. And I just want to say that I'm proud to work for a company who cares about their drivers, their equipment, and the children that they transport.
Hi, my name is Natalie Hooker, I'm 242 Sussex Webb. I'm coming in behalf as a parent. I have to say, just for your consideration, that a lot of the other families that I spoke with are very happy with our bus drivers. I personally feel, for the first time with my son, that he can get on the bus and I'm not worried about him. My first child, who's 15, refused to go on the bus, she was scared to death. I had to take her to and from the schools all throughout her elementary, and within also to the junior high school. So I'd like for you to take in consideration how appreciative I am of these bus drivers, and just take in that consideration, because I'm nervous. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of me and some other parents. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anitra Marinchak, and this is my daughter Emily, my husband's Keith. And we live at 19 Pennsylvania Avenue in Latrobe. I'm a prior service member, and I have a child in harm's way as we speak. When I put my daughter on the bus in the morning, I know I've got one child that's not in harm's way. I have made a very good relationship with our bus driver. My daughter, when she first started going to CDT, was new there, unlike the other students, and she had trouble making friends. So she made friends with the bus driver. And that's why I'm here tonight. Because you can't replace that in our lives. You can't put a price on that in our lives. I don't care about your budget and your prices. My taxes pay you to do that. I want you to take into consideration this young lady, who has made a relationship with a gentleman that was sitting in this office. And we came here tonight so that you can understand that this is what you're dealing with. It's not just numbers and prices. It's people and their lives. I have a cousin who drives for this company, and I have an aunt who's sitting behind me, drives for this company. These are people, not prices. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, I'm Todd Fiscura at 204 Campbell Road. I have your package this evening. I think I've figured out where the $1 million comes from. Take 77 drivers, take a times their wage, and in five years, that's your $1 million. Because payroll, just for A.J. Myers, is pretty close to $900,000 a year, believe it or not. $900,000 a year just on their payroll in that one garage. And you're concerned about the $1 million over a five-year contract. Now, what most of you don't know is, I actually grew up in Kexburg, Redford, Mount Pleasant. I have lots of family down there. I know I have family whose teachers were with us in this school district, and I have good friends who are on the school board down there. And some of the things that I've heard about their negotiations with the contract that they got was mind-blowing. And I hope to God it's not happening here. There's a reason why I live in Union Township. Because at one time, I lived in Kexburg and worked for this family on their family dairy farm. And the worst thing to do is work for family. Because it doesn't work. My family right now, over in Kexburg, is now out of business because this family didn't work. I'm in Union Township as a sole proprietor. I know what it is to work for and with family. And it doesn't work. Thank you.
Any other visitors who wish to speak? Anyone else?
What they said about paying your rent.
Please mark the line, yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name's Carl Fouch. My two daughters graduated from Great Latrobe High School. I'm an outsider, I'm from Mount Pleasant also. The $3 million they...
Sir, are you a driver?
Yes, I'm a driver for A.J. Myers.
Please consider.
If I wasn't, I wouldn't be here. But the $3 million they're talking about in rent, you said you never paid anything, right? Where'd the board get their information then? That's how people got the information for them. We were also told by people that moved in down there that there was nothing wrong with the roof choice in that building. Their inspector went in, climbed through there on his hands and knees, couldn't find a problem. They said it was a recent new roof. They're right. Something just doesn't seem right here, you know? Somebody's trying to cover something that they don't want anybody to know about. I mean, I'm dumb, you know, I'll be the first to admit it, I'm dumber than hell when they tell me stuff like this. But I can see through people when they're not being truthful. If I can stand here and talk to people looking straight in the eye, I give them my guns. You know, if you want to look at the floor, or fiddle with your pencil, or anything like that, you know? But I don't work for people that don't tell me the truth. You know? I probably got 2 million miles on my butt, I drove a truck, I drove a bus, and I'm semi-retired. And, you know, when you hear the same thing every day, "Damn, damn," you know? And you get lied to, you know? That, you know, that just breaks my faith in the board. That's, you know, that's it. You know? I mean, if you want to go for the low bid, you go for the low bid. But I don't want anybody to come crawling back and say, "Boy, we should have listened to those guys." That's all I got to say.
Anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, and at this time, since I know everyone here is here because of transportation, going to change the order of the meeting, and I'm going to go right to transportation. Music. 120. Motion to approve the Resolution 2019-2020, which is Resolution 19, which is to approve the people's transportation services. It resolves that the Great Latrobe Board of School Directors hereby approves the pupil transportation services for busing to DMJ Transportation, subject to the appropriate due diligence and pending a final preparation and review of the contract by the solicitor. So the transportation pupil is anticipated by and from such point along and over such routes and at such time set forth within the schedule set by the district for years 7.1 of 2020 through and ending 7.1 of 2025. Copy of the fully executed agreement that we made part of the district minutes of the district. We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Mr. Naples?
Thank you, members of the town. I have been asked by the board of school directors to address the issues that were raised at our information session on Monday, and also some of the issues that were raised today, and to discuss the rationale that the school board has in awarding the transportation contract to DMJ. Let me start by stating two numbers. And as concerned as we are with people, the school district has to take into account all the taxpayers. Let me state two numbers to you. The first number is $2,053,000, and the second number is $1,018,000. The first number represents the savings to the taxpayers of Great Latrobe School District that the board achieved by not just entering into a new early-birth contract with A.J. Myers without the RFP. That's the difference that would have been paid if the RFP had not gone forward. The second number, $1,018,000, represents the savings to the taxpayer by Great Latrobe School District accepting DMJ's proposal over the proposal set forth by A.J. Myers and the proposal by First Stude. That's $1,018,000 in savings. And in some respects, I could stop though because the savings are so compelling. But there have been concerns raised, and we do appreciate everybody who's come and stayed and argued. But there have been concerns raised by people associated with A.J. Myers over the last few weeks and on Monday. And I want you to know that we listen to these concerns, and we carefully examine them, and we found them to be completely without evidence and without any narrative. Let me tell you what these concerns were. On Monday night, representatives from A.J. Myers said that they had very real concerns that they wanted to bring to our attention, they could do it publicly, but they preferred to do it privately. And when I hear something like that as a solicitor from my school district, I know that it's something that we have to investigate. And I asked A.J. Myers if their representatives could provide me with the information, and we had a very nice meeting, very cordial, very professional, basically two guys who work for our dads, and we had a nice conversation about that. And the concerns that were laid out, however, were two. And they've been out there, we've been hearing about them, and they were really nothing new. The first was that a secretary in our transportation office has a family relationship with individuals who are employed at DMJ. And the second was the concern that was brought forward by Mr. Fiscura that the numbers in the state subsidy report make it appear that DMJ got paid the same amount in the '16-'17 year with fewer vehicles and the '15-'16 year with more vehicles. So let me address these two issues briefly. The secretary in the transportation office at Great Latrobe School District does have relatives who work at DMJ. One of the relatives is in Human Resources, and the other is at this charter. Neither of those individuals had any input into the RFP numbers. And I carefully investigated all the Christian employees who were involved with the RFP, including the secretary of the transportation office and Mr. Watson, who had to sit through an interview because he was involved with the RFP. And I want to tell you that I never saw any indication or any evidence that the transportation secretary who works for Great Latrobe ever saw the RFP at any time, much less at a time when that transportation secretary could have somehow provided or colluded with DMJ by giving them numbers. In fact, I interviewed Mr. Watson, who has been one of the finest business managers in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and he has indicated to me that he is the only one that saw the RFPs when they came in and when they were submitted under seal. The transportation secretary, the people I've been referring to, never saw those RFPs. So, what's the issue? Great Latrobe School District has an employee who is related to employees at DMJ. Family relationships take place in small towns, in school districts, in small areas. Teachers are related to board members, administrators are related to teachers. Sometimes board members are married to teachers, and under state law, they can even vote on a collective bargaining agreement. It's not a crime to have relatives in two companies that do business with each other. It is wrong if the people that are doing... It is wrong if the people that are doing business with each other are colluding or passing information back and forth. And that clearly didn't happen here. There is absolutely no evidence of it. And if so, let's look at this with some common sense. If there was some kind of collusion here, then it really was a bad job because it came in a million dollars cheaper. So if somebody was trying to help DMJ get a better deal, it certainly did a bad job, but there was no evidence of it whatsoever. And in fact, the secretary who has been pointed to in this case is owed an apology. She is an excellent employee, she is a fine person, and the charges and suggestions and innuendos without one shred of evidence are disgraceful. Anyone who thought badly of her made a big mistake here. Now let me turn to the numbers in the subsidy report. The claim on Monday was the following. In 2015-16, DMJ had sixteen vans and they were paid $868,000. In 2016-17, they used ten vans and were paid $837,91. And it was argued here that somehow this numbers shows a significant change year over year in per vehicle costs. So let's address that presumption. First, anybody that does transportation knows that using a subsidy report, PDE statement to the state of Pennsylvania is a very risky way to get your numbers. A subsidy is a amount of money that school districts get back for transportation. Subsidies for transportation at Greater Lake Grove are a third of what Greater Lake Grove actually pays. For example, when you do a subsidy report, um, you, you're saying to Harrisburg, we want the most money you possibly can give us back. So what you do, every vehicle that is used by a school district, or, or, excuse me, by a bus company of a school district, is considered for a subsidy report. But when you send to Harrisburg for that subsidy, you can only use one run for one vehicle per day. Even if that vehicle makes five runs a day, your subsidy will only be one run, so you have to pick one run to do. And that's just one example of a subsidy report. A subsidy report doesn't show how many runs are done, it doesn't show how many students are on each run, doesn't show where all the addresses are, doesn't show whether you have a monitor or a nurse on the bus. It shows none of those. So using a subsidy report as some indication of really hard numbers that shows some divergence in those two years on the DMJ numbers just doesn't work. It's like describing what happened at a baseball game by reading the box score rather than watching a game. Andrew McCutchen will go oh for five, but he makes a remarkable catch that saves the game at bottom of the ninth. But if you didn't see that happen, you just saw that Andrew McCutchen went oh for five and you think he had a lousy game. And that's what that state subsidy numbers are when you're trying to rely on. But let's go back to the difference in the numbers. Now, that difference in the numbers between the two years would have been relevant if everything had stayed the same in DMJ's work in one year to the next. But it never does with DMJ. DMJ does work that always changes year over year. DMJ does the, the majority of the special needs runs, they go to many schools, they travel between elementary school boundaries, they do a number of the special ed runs, which involve, involve payment for monitors and for nurses. Uh, they do most of the non-public school runs at Aquinas, Bible Baptist, Grace Bible, Harvest Christian, and Harvest Christian. And depending on the special needs of the school, the non-public school or the public runs, they have to determine how every vehicle is used, and special ed placement changes dramatically year after year. DMJ was hired by Greater Lake Grove School District with their last provider because they provided, uh, a more flexible, uh, and a more versatile approach and ability to adapt to the changing schedule that we have every year. A.J. Myers, um, has done a good job, but their schedule is, is basically stacked. They, they have, uh, the same bus routes for the large buses, where A.J. Myers, every year will have something different, different students, different runs, different schools. Or, excuse me, DMJ will have different runs, different schools. And so it's not unusual that they have a different number of vans. And to follow up on this, let me give you some more recent numbers. Mr. Fiscura, you had asked about, um, seventeen, eighteen, a year of pamphlet to the board. Well, in seventeen, eighteen, DMJ had thirteen vans used and they were paid $860,000. In eighteen, nineteen, they had fourteen vans used and they were paid $844,000. So there's really nothing sinister in these numbers. Uh, they represent routine yearly variations that are based on the changing variables of the schedule that DMJ has been asked to do for the school district. I think the most important thing though, that I want to say a night to the, to the drivers in attendance, um, the school district isn't looking just at the bottom line. We are very, very concerned that we keep good drivers and that we retain our good drivers. And we have, in the negotiations with DMJ, constantly stressed that there cannot be a falling off in the compensation for drivers, in the treatment of drivers, because we cannot afford to lose our drivers. I heard the, I heard the drivers speak on Monday and tonight, and I don't think there's a board member here that doesn't remember or hasn't been influenced in our childhood by the bus drivers. After the meeting, uh, on Monday, I got to see Mrs. Bronson, who is, um, a unofficial member of the Naples family for about fifty years and is loved by my whole family. I got to see an old friend of mine, Karen Hamilton, who learned the bus together in first grade. And I remember everything about those days, and I think anybody here at the table would tell you the same thing. So that is a concern and that is something that the board will continue to monitor, that the, uh, compensation packages for the drivers, uh, be first and foremost. So in conclusion, this board has to represent all of the taxpayers. Um, numbers can be thrown around and numbers can be played with, but one number doesn't lie tonight, and that is $1,018,000 of savings to the taxpayers, which is the result of the contract.
I think we have to just address some of the parents' concerns as well. I know we went through some switch when we went from First Student, I remember those being turned off by First Student to A.J. Myers, and now we're back to the DMC. If you could just address that issue for our parents.
Sure, absolutely. Many concerns have been addressed about special needs students, changing buses, just even though the training that the bus drivers have for the special needs students and the process for aligning bus drivers who can deal with special needs students and build those relationships that are absolutely crucial. Another thing that I would like to state with DMJ, with the GPS system and the fact of constantly the opportunity for principals, administrators, to maintain the safety of our students and being able to track where the bus is on their phone, if the bus is moving, if the bus is stopped, if the door is open, if the driver's seatbelt is not on, and the speed of the bus, if I did not say that. If the bus is stopped idling, is stopped and idling, or shut off. If a parent is frantic because their child isn't on home yet. We are able to access that information in the palm of our hands immediately with that technology.
Technology doesn't always work.
Did you, did you want to add anything else, Mr. Palmer? What other things were you talking about addressing? The fact of transition, the fact of...
Yeah, I, I guess it's a holistically, it's not only special needs, but it's just, you know, it's, um, related to seeing, you know, address that with your child here. I think it's, you know, as a board, we care about forty-five hundred kids roughly. And as a board, that's who we work for. The taxpayers of our minds are there, but they're not quite equal. The students themselves are on top of everything, always. And it's always talked about at every meeting, and feel free to attend every meeting. We do them twice a month, and I do another one once a month at the Votex School, AWCTC. And I can tell you that out of the twelve years I've been here, I can count on one hand, when major issues come up, that's when people come out. Any other time of the year, twelve months, we're here two times a year, two times a month, except for November. You're free to come anytime. You're free to see it on TV. You're free to see everything on the website. Come and talk to us before this comes to a head, issues like this come to a head. We started talking about this in, what, June? At every meeting, it's on this agenda, every meeting, the agenda's public. So when you start talking about things like that, you have to understand that out of the forty-five hundred kids, that's who's on everybody's mind right here right now. It's not, it's the money, but it's also the kids who comes first. And that's where we stand every day. And we have your backs, every one of your backs. Thank you.
Do any of the board members have any questions or comments?
I, I just have one comment, Mr. Cassie. Um, I've been on the board long enough to remember when First Student was on the bus company and put out an RFP then. A.J. Myers came in and they leveled them. I, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Watson, how much had...
About $1.3 million less, a reduction of about between six and seven percent in year one.
Right. And we were very grateful for that. They took a pay freeze one year, at a time when the recession was hitting. It was very important to our bottom line as the school district because revenues were falling and, and costs, expenses were rising. So we understand A.J. Myers' position that they've invested a lot in this district. But they did that to, for our students. First Student lost that contract after having had it for many years. We have a fiduciary obligation to our taxpayers, but that is definitely second to the obligation we feel to our students. Many of us are parents of former students or current students in this district who also ride buses. Bob Piper was our bus driver at our home, and he's beloved. I understand that feeling as a parent. I believe Bob drove for First Student and then drove for A.J. Myers. I hope that you will, as drivers and beloved drivers within the, the parents and families in this district, reconsider your position not to go to DMJ.
We will not when a company is unfair as they are to their employees.
That's your, that's your opinion. I'm just saying that this was done seven years ago. So I...
We have a fair person.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, this time I will vote for both.
Mr. Muse? Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser? Mrs. Cozer?
Yes.
Mr. McCassie?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. McCombs?
That motion passes. Okay, this time the board continues to hear questions.
Resolution number one nineteen of two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty is a settlement of the previous treaty on Robin Dale Energy Services tax appeal. I'm gonna ask for a motion to review that motion. This is a tax assessment appeal for Robin Dale Energy Services. They are the company that bought the name Old River Elementary School for $450,000 about a year and a half ago. Robin Dale put approximately $4 million into the school in their regulations. Oddly enough, the school has been off the tax rolls for about a hundred and ten years, but they keep a total, um, figure for the appraisal with accounting based on just the square footage inside of the school. So what happened was when Robin Dale bought the school, it was appraised for somewhere around eight million, nine hundred thousand dollars, which was just absolutely ludicrous. They put this money in, approximately $4 million, they got an appraisal, brought it to us, reviewed it with the board, Mr. Watson and I reviewed it. And we felt that the appeal that they filed to get their appraisal value of $4 million was more than fair. We did not oppose it, we, we, in fact, we didn't even attend the hearing of the courthouse in Washington. And what happened was, um, they were turned down. And, um, we approached the board, we believed that the appraisal value that they suggested was completely fair. And rather than put them through a full court hearing, we decided that this case should be settled immediately. They agreed to a settlement of $4 million. And that's on the agenda tonight in this resolution, and I highly recommend that you pass it. I would point out as well that Robin Dale had not bought their appeal quickly enough to get in for last year, and they would have paid their taxes the first year there at the $8.8 million assessed value without complaint. And, um, we truly think this is, uh, very fair. We have conferred with our partners, the city of Lutero, on this matter and our partners this morning, how they, all of whom believe this is fair. We have drafted up a proposed settlement agreement to take to the judge as soon as the, um, um, three bodies agree to pass this. So I would recommend that you vote yes upon the resolution number one.
Like that, I thought basically what you said, of how important it was, and not only being able to sell the school and recovering on $450,000, people sold the school for a time, to the family and folks at Robin Dale. I think that having Robin Dale make the investment in town, it could have been annualized, we know that. Um, and to us as a school board, being a partner, bringing them into the city, not only into the Pro Street, but into the city of Lutero makes a big difference. And having the school come back on the tax, on the tax rolls is a big part. For the taxpayer side, that is almost a film of a mill, right? Having them, bringing them back. So I think that, that, that part of it, and being a part of that as a school board, has been one of the great, one of the great things to do with this. Thank you.
They built offices in that building for their property, and I believe that they're going to continue to develop the building and maybe, uh, open it up for rent and uses. Uh, they are also, um... They are also considering developing some type of scheduled public use for the auditorium. And they have been particularly good citizens. They've kept the character of the building the same as you drive by it other than the Robin Dale sign. Depending on what age you are, it could be the high school, the junior high school, or the LES. And that was a concern, especially a lot of our senior citizens have who had attended high school there. They didn't see the building torn down, they didn't want to see the character change as you drive by it. It really happened.
Excuse me, I have a question. Just a quick question. Was it the original high school a historical site? It wasn't? It's a shock.
Yeah, but my question was, if in fact in the future, right out of San Fernando, you have invested in it so far, I agree with you. But there's a possibility we could come back in the future and say, well, look, they're renting it out, you're going to...
Sure, sure.
We're going to raise it. Is this still sticking us in a hole that we can't go raising?
No, no, no. Every year, every year is a new tax year, both up and down. And unfortunately for us, more often than not, what we see are a lot of the businesses asking to reduce it. But every year is a new year and at any point in time up to a brief September twenty-ninth or whatever, people can ask for a change or we can ask for change. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? That motion passes. Now, education planning, Mrs. Maynes.
First item on the agenda is the enrollment of the fourth and fifth.
No, it's a tax trigger.
Straight forward. Okay, the second item on your agenda is to approve Denise Socrates' speech about all of the therapy services during the twenty-two school year.
Well, that's just going to be on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, it's on the tax. So that will be on your agenda for approval. And also on the agenda for approval will be to approve the Westmore Intermediate Lending Library Agreement, stem and kits and equipment for the nineteen twenty school year. I understand this is absolutely amazing, so it is. The school district will have available through this lending. I haven't seen it yet, but I'm watching. One way and the last item on the agenda is to approve an affiliation agreement between Chad University School of Education and Greater Lake Trail School District for the two thousand and twenty-two thousand and twenty school year. And the next virtual community meeting will be held on Tuesday, January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, five thirty, the University of Chicago.
Thank you. I've asked Mrs. Cozart to take the finance and facilities reports just to make it a little bit easier rather than having Mr. Hauser try to do it through the speaker. So go ahead, Mrs. Maynes.
Yes, next, on the seventeenth, on our agenda will be the treasuries report in the bills. And we will also approve, or have a motion to approve Act One Resolution, not raise our taxes appropriate index. That will be on the agenda items. And our finance committee meeting minutes are attached to this agenda. And our next committee, finance committee meeting will be January fourteenth at five thirty PM in the central library.
Thank you.
And I'll just go ahead with this. We will have an agenda item to advertise for general school supplies, hard science, paper, estonil, electrical and medical supplies, in the fall, winter, spring, sports equipment supplies for the twenty-two-one school year. And our next, well, our last facilities meeting will self this afternoon. Please, I'm a board representative.
Thank you. Mrs. Mayne, student activities and recreation?
Yes, the athletic community meeting minutes from November twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen are attached.
Community relations, Mr. Music, would you please take that?
Thank you. There will be an agenda item to accommodate the GLSD parts and recreation commission board representative. The Latrobe GLSD parts and recreation commission meeting minutes from October seventeenth are attached to the board's agenda. And the next Latrobe GLSD parts and recreation commission meeting will be on Thursdays, December nineteenth. And that will be at four thirty, and that will be at the Latrobe Elementary School.
Thank you.
Can I comment? The annual holiday night this year, if you call it the annual, tickets are available if you're interested in doing a fun night. And you can just contact the officer there and ask him to purchase a ticket if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Mayne, the first board meeting here?
A summary of the WIDE board meeting minutes from November twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen are attached. And the next WIDE committee meeting is Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, seven PM, the WIDE board meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Music, EWC TC.
The EWC TC, I don't know if you played last night, and I worked at the EWC TC in the morning. And I'm going to do the last one.
Thank you. And I'd also congratulate Mr. Palmer, who's elected as the president of the joint operating committee. Congratulations.
Thank you. I did show up at the second meeting. It comes to you.
He was actually in big cheer, joint area board.
He was the big guy.
Anybody that's not paying attention gets none.
That's below us all. Steve and I are walking down the hall, I'm walking with Steve, down the hall to the meeting room.
Right.
I knew I had to go there. And I go, I'm going the wrong way. Steve says, I'm getting my jacket. I start BS with Steve. Watch that hat, outside with Steve, throw it.
We sat at the meeting for about seven to ten minutes waiting. And then Tom said, you know, I think you forgot to come back.
Or OD on traveling, right?
We must, we must have gone, we must have gone with Tom.
There you go. Well, we had that good.
Well, congratulations though.
Thank you very much.
Board policy, you have new school director training from PSBA at your desk. So for those of you who it's appropriate for, please take a look at that.
And if anybody has any questions on that, just again, for newly elected members with five hours that have to be completed and has to be completed in the first year. And for newly, excuse me, for re-elected members, it's three hours. And if there are online options and face-to-face options, and if you have any questions about the sessions, Mrs. Porowski would be able to help you. I know they are in the process of scheduling more sessions in the spring.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, technology.
Thank you. Next technology meeting will be Tuesday, February eighteenth, here at six PM, CSC. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Dr. Tepper, you pretend it's right in date.
Yes, the next meeting, voting meeting, I would ask the board to approve resignations as stated for baseball assistant coach, English teacher, dramatics, director, custodian, and baseball first assistant, as well as approve a professional personnel position for our secondary music teacher. We hope to have a recommended candidate for the December seventeenth meeting. We're holding interviews, we already held interviews, we're holding teaching rounds next week. We would also ask the board to approve the substitute teacher as stated and classified position for support personnel as a classroom assistant. In addition, we do have some coaching positions, volunteer coaching positions, as well as a dramatic director, Allison Duda, who will be taking the place of Mr. Van Crack who has resigned. It is a very busy month with activities going on at Greater Latrobe. Tonight, we actually have a concert going on at both Bagley and Latrobe Elementary Schools. Various concerts have been stated. In addition to that, we have our... Oh, their side, sorry about that. In addition to that, we also have the River City Brass Band Holiday Concert, which is Friday next, or December thirteenth, actually, next Friday. Our students will be participating in the concert with the River City Brass. And that is actually being put on by our Greater Lake Trail Partners and Education Foundation as a fundraiser. Our next breakfast, the champions, which is awesome, now that you've waited to start your morning, is Thursday, December nineteenth, here at seven thirty in the Center for Student Creativity. And everyone is welcome. Go ahead.
Mrs. Porowski, I want to be there with everyone, know that your receipt is a list of board members, your addresses, your email addresses. If you just look it over, yeah, I tried to tell you that earlier. But if you just look it over, please, and if there are any corrections, let her know. Thank you.
And our meetings are stated again, Tuesday, December seventeenth, as our voting meeting, our regular meeting in January, our committee meeting on the fourteenth, as well as our regular meeting on the twenty-fourth.
At this time, we'll have hearing of visitor to part two. This is where anyone in the audience can come forward with any concerns they have. And once again, please take your name and address when you step up to the podium.
Hi, Lisa Darren, DMJ Transportation. I'd just like to thank you all for the opportunity that you gave us today. We are extremely excited about moving into Latrobe. I think it's going to be highly beneficial for your district and for us because now we can begin to do a lot of things for the other districts. I'd also like to assure you that it is not our intention to cut salary and wages. That would be cutting off our nose to spite our face. We have never cut wages of the drivers. We have never cut hours for the drivers. When we went into Greensburg, we matched the wages. We went into Mount Pleasant, we matched the wages. In fact, our drivers at Mount Pleasant actually make more than the drivers at A.J. Myers. I'd like to close by saying that I assure you there was absolutely no collusion here because if there was, we would not have left a million dollars on there for you and your child. So we look forward to working with you, working with you, and again, thank you for the opportunity.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Sheikul. I just got to DMJ Transportation. Just to touch on what Lisa said, should you guys hear any more issues or concerns for parents, students, drivers, please give them our contact information. We have three different offices. They can call any office number, they can remain private, they can ask us any questions, we'll answer them honestly. We want to be transparent, make this a seamless transition for the school, the parent, everybody involved. So please give them our contact information, you can find it online. We're very easy to get ahold of, so please feel free to pass that message over.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, then I will move to accept Resolution one twenty-one for German. All those in favor? Close? Any German?